That opportunity, even the timeline that it takes to get the yearly permit makes it so that often it's outside of the amount of time for the request. So I, you know, the local food truck community really supports, you know, these fees and I think it'll be a great opportunity to build a great relationship between the local community, the city, the town, and the food truck owners.
And, um, I know when I just took the, when I chaperoned down to Washington DC, I took, when we went down there, Washington Monument, there was one street that was lined up.
Loaded.
I gotta say, it was about a half mile long of every type of food truck. And I took some pictures, I know, and I, and I shared them with some friends and I said, this is, I know they have a population, but I think if we did like a monthly event or something like that.
Roger, I mean, you do that, Roger Williams Park every week, so you started, yeah?
Yeah.
They still live in it.
Yeah, and I think that that's really one of the, the real nice benefits for a town is that someone might be interested in opening a Vietnamese restaurant in town, but they're not quite sure that the community will support Vietnamese food. So if they start with a truck and they come in three or four times, they're like, wow, people are really embracing this, this is an area where we can look to open a restaurant. And we've seen that a lot in other towns like, like Cranston where there are now three food trucks that have restaurants and, you know, we've developed events in Providence that now draw a thousand people every single Friday night and we've now doing a couple of events in Warwick a month, you know, in different areas that, that maybe in, in the past people didn't think of as, as a destination. And when I look around West Warwick, you know, I own property here and when I drive through this, the town, I see a lot of places where, you know, you can envision the community coming out and supporting something new and exciting. So I think it's a, it's a great opportunity.
It's a great community event, too. I think you still have a line from Frisky Fries from the community event.
Frisky Fries is unbelievable.
Yeah, so, yeah, and, and I think that, um, you know, who knows, maybe Frisky Fries will open up their third store in, in West Warwick someday soon.
But it has become destination at Roger Williams Park in the summer for people to come out there, you got the live music, you got people kinda hanging out around the carousel. I think it's.
And that's the whole point of this.
Yeah.
It's a great idea. It needs to be a destination. It needs to, uh, you know, get the community involved.
Yeah, I mean.
These are positive all the way around.
I even look at those couple of empty lots right across from the Arctic Playhouse and think that, you know, could we, you know, partner with, you know, Bonehead Wings and, and look at that, those lots and put food trucks there on a, on a, you know, semi-regular occasional basis and draw some attention to those lots and, you know, maybe a new building goes up there or something exciting happens even in areas like that.
Yeah, and I know, I know Angelo, I think I sent him your way one day, Jesse's New York system used to be here in West Warwick down in Cumberland Farms. He does have a truck. Unfortunately, Cumberland Farms doesn't allow that type of restaurant in there anymore because they sell hot dogs and everything else.
Yeah.
So he had to move out and he has his store up in, uh, Situate on, uh, Pippin Orchard, right at the corner of Pippin Orchard Route 12. He wanted to bring his truck back into town also. He was looking at, he's looking for locations.
Well, what you have, what you have is some of the problems where the, the locals will call us. And you can't blame them. They pay taxes all year round, they're not paying a hundred dollars for the year.
Yep.
And it takes business away from their restaurant. So as a function for the, for the town, it's great, but as a, to put a permanent place near a restaurant, I think we'd have a problem.
Yeah, I think there's some protections for that. I think there are a couple of things. I think that it's important, I think it's important to remember that not only are, are food trucks not paying your local taxes and your property taxes and your sewer, they're also not using any services. They come in, they use their own power, their own fuel, they take their garbage out, but they also do have to return the one percent of the meals tax that they collect in West Warwick does come back to West Warwick. And what we found in most situations locally and what the national data kinda confirms is that, um, it kinda lifts everybody up. You know, that, that you might have some restaurants and businesses in West Warwick that maybe aren't getting the attention they deserve and you bring food trucks in and people follow those food trucks and then they're like, wait a minute, that line's really long at that food truck, let's go and sit down in that restaurant or let's come back and try it or let's go in there and have a drink afterwards. And I think that there's a lot of evidence that, and we, I think we saw it even in the fall at River Point Park where people from surrounding towns came and said, this is an incredible, you know, sports athletic complex, how did we not know it's here? And I think that that generates, you know, excitement and interest that really helps boost everyone up across the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
And for the record, we are now streaming live. Any other comment? Any public comment?
I was just gonna say, is it, do I have to come on? Mark's gonna get mad. Nicole, no, I was just thinking, if, if you work it with the concert events going on that we've already got planned, I, just, it was just my little thing. I mean, we've got things that are already on the table for the town.
So if the wiener truck pulls up there, Farucci's gonna be down on there.
What's that?
If the wiener truck pulls up there, I can tell you right now, Farucci's gonna be calling.
You got a, if you got a doughboy truck. But, yeah, I mean, you, yeah, you got a lot of opportunities already to throw, throw them down the road.
Can we, um, choose what trucks are going to be at what event?
That's, well, because if they have the permit, then they can come down.
They have a permit.
Yeah, a permit, they can go.
Just they have to go with, by our laws.
So they could be five trucks or they could be fifteen trucks?
They could, yep.
Yeah, if they have a permit, they can show up at a baseball game. We go to that with the, the ice cream trucks that kinda sneak in there sometimes.
But if the council wants to regulate numbers, you're gonna have to do it in such a way that either first come, first served or, you know, fairness factor, but you guys dictate as to what you want to allow.
So if he decides he wants to run an event and gets fifty trucks here, you know, let's say he does set it up with Lori, put up at the Civic Center, um, they're having a concert or something up there and they say, okay, we're gonna load up trucks outside, then they can do so.
Okay.
The only thing is, they, they must have a permit.
They have to work with traffic for their streams.
Right, right.
So this will be allowed, the empty will be allowed, so there's a free passage or free flow of pedestrian traffic cars, so food trucks wouldn't be in the way. But again, you guys can regulate it depending on where the event's gonna be.
Okay, yeah.
So you can't, you can't regulate the type of food.
Right.
I'll use what Jay just said. We had Mr. Lemon, Dell's Lemonade, and Kona Ice all going down to the field during the summer, during summer basketball and baseball and, you know, concession stands sell a lot of things there also.
Right.
So they were looking, Kona Ice actually makes a deal with the leagues and says, we'll give you ten percent of the proceeds at the end of the season. Well, later on, we found out, none of them had permits. So they were all getting ejected and Kona Ice was the only one who came down and got a permit.
Right.
The other two didn't wanna hear it, but every time they would sneak in every night and then we'd have to tell them, leave, leave, and they would park right, right where, you know, and I was, I'm down there, you know, I used to be down there four or five nights a week so I'd be able to, finally they got a permit, but this year again, I don't think they got a permit, so it's because they don't renew it every year, just till somebody picks on them, you know. But that's, that's one thing, when they run these events, you know, we'd have to have somebody make sure that all these trucks, so if you get twenty trucks, we wanna make sure all twenty are registered as well.
Right.
You know, you don't want two registered and the rest sneaking in.
But this is a good first step.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, but I mean, all the ones that take place with Eric, I mean, I'm sure that he makes, you, you gotta make sure that they're all, do you keep track of that for the ones that are part of, uh, food truck, are I?
Yeah, I mean, so we're really talking about two different things, you know, one, you know, once they get the permit, it means that they can, you know, come into the city and, and vend following your current rules and your current rules say that the trucks can't park within a thousand feet of any place selling the same item, so.
So they can never have a wiener truck show up right next to the New York system, yeah.
Exactly. So that would be the first thing. And the second thing is that, that.
Sell like food, so Farucci sells hamburgers, hot dogs, french fries, you can't have a hamburger truck, a french fry truck.
Within a thousand feet. And I would assume that extends to your concession stands at the ballpark. So if you have a concession stand and they're selling stuff, you know, any vendors would come and have to spend, you know, and, and I think there are, you know, there are bigger picture ways to look at this, if this were to grow, is to put in other protections, but in terms of the event, whenever we do an event, you know, we'll, we'll generally, number one, we, if we're doing it at the Civic Center, we'd go through Lori and we'd go through all the, the permitting and processing that she requires. Um, and then, you know, we as an event planner, if one, when, or anyone that's a planning event, would require them to have all the state level and city level permits. And that's part of the value of this is that, that, you know, you're trying to limit the renegades of just coming in and parking without a permit. And when you have a fee of three hundred or four hundred or five hundred dollars, some people might actually feel like, well, let's try to sneak in once or twice and see if it's worth it before we get a permit. At a hundred dollars a year, it's in line with other cities and towns and it's easy to say, look, you make the investment of a hundred dollars and now you have the opportunity to do whatever events people are organizing and it could even mean, you know, that, that I heard that you have a carnival coming up this weekend, you know, it's not unusual for a hospital or a carnival or an office to call us and say, you know, our, our kitchen flooded last night or the, you know, the food trucks coming that are part of the carnival got stuck in traffic. And to have a process where, you know, it takes then three weeks to get licensed to get a food truck to come in and, and help save the day, this kind of alleviates that because now we can go back to all the food trucks and say, hey, look, West Warwick is now friendly, it's only a hundred dollars a year, go get your permits because now when those things come up over the course of the year or when there are opportunities to develop things, um, you know, and it could even be someone saying, hey, you know, we're having a, a meeting at a, a church with three hundred people and we just realized that there's no restaurant within, you know, four blocks, do you think maybe a food truck or two would come and park in our parking lot and serve people after the meeting? If trucks have the permits in place already, that becomes an overnight decision. If they don't, it becomes a three or four week process to get the permit. So that's one of the big advantages of putting something like you're putting in place today into effect.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I might suggest the council concerned about people coming in without getting their permit. Maybe down the road, if that becomes a problem, we can always put in some type of a violation that, uh, spell it out that they.
I believe there's a violation in already, if I remember correctly.
I think there is.
Make the violation higher than the font, than the.
Yeah.
That's right.
Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Certification of town budget resolved that the attached is certified as the town budget approved at the May eighteenth, two thousand seventeen all-day referendum.
I'll move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Yeah.
Tax levy resolved at the town council of the town of West Warwick hereby propose to impose a tax or for the expenditure of money in the town council meeting legally assembled on the eighteenth day of May, AD two thousand seventeen hereby order the apportionment and collection of a tax on the ratable real estate and tangible personal property in the sum not less than sixty-two thousand, sixty-two million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and one dollars and not more than sixty-five million, three hundred ninety-eight dollars, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Um, make a motion to waive the reading.
I'll second.
Motion to waive the rest of the reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? Again, this is just, uh, basically the budget for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, the levy. Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.
Theatrical license resolved that the town council hereby approves the following application. Camp Fauwau, Attention, Wes Skorsky, date July fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, location Three Keys Way, timed ten AM to three PM.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash thirteen, first reading and ordinance amending chapter four, animals and fowl, article two, animal control and chapter twelve-point-five, parks and recreation, section twelve-point-five dash two of the code of west ordinances of the town of West Warwick.
Who sponsored this ordinance?
This should have been.
It was David that, that he didn't really know about it.
Huh?
He sponsored it without really knowing.
All right, I'll move the ordinance.
I'll second. I'll second.
Nice sponsor, I don't know. Surprise.
This began with a call from, uh, Major Knott. We now have in the town of West Warwick, somebody breeding cats.
Yes.
We had no authority to breed cats. So Ma- Major Knott gave me a call and I did some research on it. The state authorizes the breeding of cats and there is a fee that goes involved with it, which if you pass this tonight, I will be coming to you next week with the, uh, for the second reading. And that fee that, by state statute, is a hundred dollars per cat. When I started doing the research to give the town authority to license the breeding of cats, I got into it and there was some other areas within the statute for cats and dogs and animals that I just upgraded our ordinance, uh, we didn't have any, uh, we had a provision that you can't own an, an unspaded dog, but you could a cat, so we put the provision in that you can't have an intact cat, uh, anymore. And I, there's also some increases in the fees and the fines. I put those in and I brought the language for a little bit, dogs being bred in kennels in line with the, uh, state statute. So the only real thing that came about, that was any major change, was the authority to permit the breeding of cats.
Is cat breeding, does that exist?
Of course.
Yes.
I don't know, dog breeding, but I know cat breeding.
You have specialist purgans and Siamese.
We've, we've.
I could say I regret starting this, but it was brought to my attention from animal control that they have at least one facility, for lack of a better word, on West Street that's promoting that they're breeding cats with no regulation. It was pointed out that there is a state law that requires municipalities to have a permitting process for that and we didn't have one. So I'll put it together, so now we do, we'd be able to follow up with that one place that we suspect is violating.
Who's going to enforce that? Animal Control?
Animal Control will do the legwork on it, try to resolve it and if we can't, we'll summon some municipal court based on our ordinance.
How about part C? Who will enforce that where it says, any person providing care and sustenance for an uninterpreted period of sixty days or longer shall be deemed the owner of such animal and shall adhere to the provisions of this chapter?
That's, that's been.
Is that, is that new?
No.
No.
That's been around?
Yes.
So what's the definition between breeding a cat or if your cat just has babies?
Advertisement and.
Okay, all right, all right, I just wanna know, yeah.
One is selling, one is accidental.
Accidental.
And in addition to, some, somewhere in the ordinance, you can't have cats and dogs or not.
So, oh, okay, all right, I get, okay, that makes sense. So just to give you a heads up, when you have more than three dogs at your house, you need a kennel. You need a kennel license. If you're doing it to breed, you need a kennel license. So that is what, and, and I've had a lot of people ask me, how come cats can just walk around? Why is it no leash law? You know, I, I, I really can't answer that question. I don't, I really don't know. But again, I know I just, I sent over a complaint from Sisson Street and Douglas Street of, seems like a lot of wild cats.
Yeah, I just, I just saw that posted today on Facebook.
And I sent it over to Chief McGarrett before he had left. But again, you know, what control do we have? If somebody's selling cats and, and people, and people do sell them, and you have special cats out there, there's hairless cats, there's Siamese, there's all sorts of cats that people can sell and they do make money on them. I know one of my counterparts at work has four hairless cats and he loves these things. Gotta keep the house at ninety in the, in the summer, but.
So in addition to just the general welfare and cleanliness of animals and houses, it also kind of tailors in on our local business licensing ordinances that obviously in those circumstances aren't being followed.
And that fee of a hundred dollars is set by statute.
How much does, how much do one of these like specialty cats like sell for? Like a Persian.
It all depends. You could be, you could be.
I'll share the Facebook page with you later.
Some, yeah.
I don't wanna let it out.
Really? For those specialty cats?
Yeah, they're very expensive.
Chief, why, spend a hundred bucks at the pound, I'm like, oh, what?
That was good, that was good.
All right, any other discussion on this matter?
Thank you for sponsoring.
Mark, what I was gonna say is when your wife comes up here, at least she comes up here with some logical things.
So what, so what are they gonna call you now? They called you the rooster, rooster down there in Florida, right?
I, I will say, Mark, you let the cat out of the bag. All right, any other comment? Roll call vote, Jason?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We'll just come up for second reading next week. Yeah. Do we have to advertise it two weeks? Does she have time enough to advertise?
Along with licenses them, licensing them all and having a leash law on them also?
You better hire some more people for whatever controls.
Mark, go around and let all the cats know this is gonna be coming up next week, please.
Like my neighbors say, I have to license my dog and they stay in my yard, why aren't your cats staying in your yard?
I know.
And they're right.
And they spray.
They're right.
All right, next one.
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash fourteen, second reading sponsored by Councilman Luchardi and ordinance amending chapter twelve, article one, section fourteen, discharge of water of the code of ordinances of the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
I, I brought this up at the last meeting, um, because a constituent came to me because water was coming out of a, uh, from a business onto his property and was flooding his basement. And, um, so we already had an ordinance in place, it just needed to be reworded a little bit. So, um, that's why we're on the second reading and, and this is what it says, the discharge of water runoff prohibited. Uh, no property owner or agent of the owner or any person occupying property with a residential or business within the town of West Warwick shall, shall discharge or cause to be discharged any, cross out, unpolluted, um, storm in or surface waters including but not limited to roof runoff, subsurface drainage, including basement drainage, cooling water, industrial process water, swimming pool water or other similar discharge directly or indirectly onto any abutting property whether public or private in all the sidewalks and streets of the town of West Warwick. With all that said, um, basically we're not looking at if, if somebody's draining a pool and it's going into the street, um, to say, no, you can't drain your pool. But if you're draining it and it goes directly into somebody's basement or, or property, then it, it's not allowed. So.
Any other comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, roll call vote, Jason?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash sixteen, first reading, once again, I don't have a sponsor here, as amended, an ordinance amending section eighteen dash five, special exemptions of the code of ordinances of the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
The council requested that the legislature, and they authorized and enabled the council to exempt the Arctic Playhouse from taxation. Uh, a ordinance was submitted to you based on that. This is an amendment to that ordinance. All I did with this amendment was format it so that it would be in the same language as the exemption ordinances that you passed, uh, a couple of months ago. So it's exactly the same as what was originally submitted in a different format. So I'm requesting that if the council sees fit to exempt the Arctic Playhouse, that you pass this version of the ordinance as opposed to the one that was submitted previously.
So is this the one that's online right now?
Yeah, the one that, the one that Mark just passed out is the one that you will be passing tonight, authorizing exemption, the Arctic Playhouse, effective, uh, last, uh, December, effect of December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, so that will go into effect this year.
I wanna say the content is exactly the same, it's just a formatting issue.
Exactly.
As far, as far as what, uh, the ordinance intends to do and the language used, everything is the same, uh, but, uh, the council just amended the format, so no substantive issues have been changed. So you can move, you can move it as amended.
Yep.
Or pass it as amended.
But now this would be, this would be forever.
That's what you, what you asked the legislature to do. The, the Enabling Act from the state legislature says the council is authorized to exempt them from, uh, Arctic Playhouse from taxation. I, at any given time, the council can revoke and, and men can revoke that exemption.
Now, this was, this was, if I remember correctly, this was an ordinance that was sponsored by Councilman Drew when he was here and.
I don't know, I, all I know is that.
There were some lengthy discussions where, uh, we got calls that raising taxes and giving exemptions and David and we brought up, uh, about after January of two thousand seventeen to tax churches.
Can, can we discuss this now? Are we up for discussion?
Well, that's what's there for.
I'm gonna have to recuse myself.
Okay. Councilmen Messier have recused themselves?
No. But a little bit, as far as the taxation of churches, there's nothing to do with that.
No, I'm just saying what we were discussing. We, we wanted to see if we could stop churches from being tax exempt.
Wait, clarify that, any new churches?
Right, from January two thousand seventeen.
Don't say all the churches, I don't want all the churches.
No.
Getting mad at me that.
You're going to hell now.
That you can't do. You cannot exempt, you cannot tax a church. Can't do it.
I scared out when I said that.
You, yes.
I don't know, we got a lot of calls that we could.
No, you can't, you can't. How does property still?
Yeah.
It did through state legislation, possibly, but the state statute.
Which you passed in your exemptions and I, you put it in verbatim, says, you can't tax churches, you can't tax, tax the registry.
All right, we'll, we'll get off that. I think what Councilman Petul is saying is by making them tax-free, um, that.
It's not, it's not permanent.
That's what he's concerned with.
No, you can revoke it any time. On an annual basis.
Yeah.
And if in fact they are bringing in people by the busload and, you know, they're looking for bigger places and now it's a six hundred seat or a six thousand seat venue, you certainly could change and rescind it. They're asking for relief right now in order to get this type of venue up and running and then off the, because you're not the taxes.
You have a couple of these specific exemptions.
This is the Mash, this is the Mashtrou, the Mashtrou building, not the existing building down the street.
It states the address and it's at twelve forty-nine Main Street.
That's what I'm trying to say, it's the Mashtrou building right now, they're developing and not the building they're in down the street. That's, that's what I'm trying to say. So it's a ma, it's an empty building right now, why they're developing it, they would like to be tax-free if not longer.
You have other specific exemptions like that for this, the station fire memorial that, that you can give and take, you can take them away, but it, it is very location specific, twelve forty-nine Main Street. So if they move, this doesn't foul them.
Correct, that's what we made sure of.
And it always stays at the address.
And what would have taxes, eight thousand, what were they? Christine, what would have taxes?
Yes.
Eight thousand?
I believe they were eight thousand.
Eight, seven hundred.
No, that's the current building they're in right now.
No.
For the next one, for the bigger one.
The one they're developing.
The one they're developing, okay.
Correct?
Yes.
But, but the idea here is to stimulate business essentially, to help them to get to a point where...
So they're paying taxes when they are now, they're developing that one.
Right, so once they move into that next building, then there's only gonna be one, one building that could...
Now, before, before they came to us with that, that was well in the process, I want to say, about three months before the election even took place. Now, meanwhile, we also put an agreement in for the attic redevelopment commission to let them have the authority to do twenty years tax free at six percent sales. And one percent, half percent goes to police, half percent goes to fire. Now, that, that one's, was in place, so realistically, if they wanted to, they could come back and ask for that same type of agreement.
Right.
If they wanted to, or you can look at what they have for an agreement.
One of the things on this, David, is that the council requested the legislature by resolution to pass this act, so it was, it came out of the council, you couldn't do it without the legislation.
But now, you gotta remember, three of, three of the council members are new and they went on in, in part of that council.
I don't know.
No, it was done when Councilman Drew, Councilman Kenny and Councilman Tucker were here also. So it was done, it was done early last year, it had to actually be in, it was over a year ago because they were concerned about the end of session coming up and it was in April or May, so they said...
I, I just assumed it was this year.
They made us get it in as, as fast as possible if we did want that request. So I'm just bringing up a new council to speed.
I just thought it was this year.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Just to clarify though, they are paying taxes on the building they're in right now?
That I'm aware of.
That building is, is taxable.
Yeah, may I? I believe they're renting that building, the owner of the building itself is paying taxes, they, they, they don't, they're not paying taxes themselves. And I believe that they're a nonprofit, they file for nonprofit status with the state, five oh one C three. Uh, and a lot of those types of organizations, it's a volunteer organization, they don't, I don't believe they pay their actors, do apply for this type of status, it's not just germane to West Warwick, it's throughout the state of Rhode Island. It is up to the, the town council whether they want to exempt that property however.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions?
Jay? To follow up on what Mark just said, it's, the state statute of exemptions is down to exemption number fifty nine. So there's fifty eight of them ahead of you.
Okay.
And so they can still come forward and ask for the new exemption?
Well, now, what happens? What happens if the state doesn't exempt this? Give us, we didn't get any okay from the state, right?
Yeah, they gave us legislation last year.
You're enabling, you're enabling...
Oh, it's enabling legislation?
It allows you to do it. It's a key word, it allows you to do it, you don't have to. Alright? So the question, the question simply is this, if you're gonna grant it to them for this type of venue, if other venues like it come in, they're gonna be seeking a similar one, which is fine. But if it's gonna stimulate the economy, so by giving them an eight thousand, seven hundred dollar break, but people are coming in on a weekly basis, spending their money here, that's gonna offset any type of tax loss.
Right.
But again, they're, they're still a year or two away from develop, full development.
So this doesn't go into effect till they move in that building?
No, it goes into effect, no, they, because they own the Mashtrou building.
They bought it.
Yeah, so that, they're looking for exemption of taxes this year.
They wanna spend their money improving it versus spending their money paying taxes.
Correct. Then if, like I said, if it's a striving business and, you know, and we could always go back and look at it, whoever's up here can always go back and look at it. Right now, it's just stimulating them to continue developing. I understand what you're thinking. Roll call vote, Jason?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Christine.
Resolution of the support of the general treasurer's legislation for a pathway to MERS.
Oh, you missed one, you missed one. Ordinance two thousand seventeen sixteen?
Nope, that was the one.
Wait a minute, where are we?
She did L, you're on M.
I'm on M.
She's on M.
I'm on the next one.
Okay.
Um, you wanna wave to me or on this one?
What's that?
Resolution supporting the Healthy Local Pension Act in the state of Rhode Island and Providence plantations.
Uh, I would make a motion to waive that reading.
I'll second.
Move and second, all in favor to waive the reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I'll move the resolution.
I'll second the resolution.
Move and second. I got a little history lesson on MERS the other day. I know our former town manager was, I was speaking to him about it also before he left. This is just, gives you another option, this doesn't put us in MERS and if I'm correct, from what I'm being told, even if you give this option, um, gives us, or gives the town another option and the town employees another option for their pension.
Excuse me.
But that also, the way I'm being told, is it also needs union approval. And so it's not, and, and some people were concerned that we could just say, yeah, we're gonna go to MERS and that's it. One thing you gotta understand about MERS also is we still gotta foot the bill, the town of West Warwick. Now, the state of Rhode Island can say, this year we owe them ten million, but they could say, next year it's twelve million, they could say fifteen million, but they set what the town owes. So you're gonna look at the pros and cons of all of it and, but this just gives us another option to enter into MERS. So that's, that's basically everything in a nutshell, there's a lot more behind the system, it's basically state run, state funded. I mean, town funded, state run. The one thing we won't have to pay is some fees, actuarial fees and stuff like that, that goes on whoever has attended a pension meeting. There's a lot of fees that the town pays right now.
You, you wouldn't pay any administrative fees, all of the administrative fees, the, the funding from the town to MERS would go into the retirement pool in the treasurer's office and all of the administrative fees are funded out of that pool. Also, there would be no need for a, a local pension board, as that would all be taken care of through the state retirement board, which is, runs MERS.
Any other questions on that? Thank you, Mark. Here, any public comment on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Discussion action, Providence Water is requesting...
Hold on one second, can we move number, I promised George we'd do four first.
Okay, revisiting the violation program in the building...
I'll make a motion to bring N four up to one.
I'll second.
Alright, number four.
Revisiting the violate...
We don't need to take a vote on that.
You can do that through consent.
Okay.
Revisiting the violation program in the building department sponsored by Councilman Padula.
George, uh, I had some conversations with George, we all have the same problems where there's no teeth in these ordinances, where it takes too long to violate someone. It'll take, uh, for instance, thirty days to make someone move something, then they go to court, they go to the, through the process and in the meantime, it's still furniture outside, there's this there, so George, you can explain it better, but we have to do something to shorten the time.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity. I think you explained it pretty well, pretty quickly there. What's happening is, reality, we're trying to...
Excuse me, George, can you just bring the mic down?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. We're trying to kind of speed up our process a little bit because we're finding that this process is very long, it's exhausting, it's not very productive and it's antiquated and amongst many other things. So, um, I took the liberty to have some copies printed up, hopefully that, you all will have an opportunity to read it thoroughly. If you have any questions, please contact our department, contact myself. We can contain, contact Shayna, our minimum housing inspector. And she can explain a lot of this to you in detail, she's been dealing with it longer than I have and she's really the one out there in the field, uh, getting all these hits. So, uh, we're not looking for financial help, we're not looking for additional, you know, personnel. We're just looking for some suggestions, possibly some, uh, genuine suggestions or maybe, uh, you know, can we, um, get some, uh, perhaps Attorney Williamson, uh, off it to probably say a few words about it? Maybe we can get some legal sit down, not attorney, so I don't know what we could do legal wise. But I'm just reaching out to y'all and hoping that there's some way that you can probably, uh, help us out.
One of the, um, issues is timeliness because these, the system is antiquated, as George said, it's, it's archaic, it's, it's just, it's something for what the community was like probably back in the nineteen forties, nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties. It's nothing close to being where it needs to be in two thousand seventeen. Uh, one of the suggestions that not only have I heard from George tonight, but through other, um, communities, is attempting to bring this directly to district court on the civil calendar. Uh, years ago, I think George was successful in Central Falls in doing it, but Central Falls, when they go to the district court, they go to the sixth division, the sixth division has the most district court judges on a daily basis. When we go to Kent County, usually there's only two judges on, one handles the criminal calendar, one handles the civil calendar. In order for the town of West Warwick to be able to go to the district court and not really disrupt, that we're gonna have to get some type of authority and or non objection from the chief judge, Jean LaFazia, because if she doesn't have a judge to handle the additional civil, uh, caseload, it's not gonna be heard anyway, it would be just as slow. So that's one option. Second option is, uh, obtaining, uh, enabling legislation that would allow the town of West Warwick specifically to cut through and streamline the process. So instead of waiting three weeks, um, something that has to be said certified, maybe we can get it to seven days, maybe we can get it to ten. Some of the logic behind this is treating, uh, these types of building matters, much like, uh, the Landlord Tenant Act that was really, um, changed back in the late eighties, early nineties, that streamlined the process because prior to that, you could stay in your rental apartment or property for months on end and the landlord could not get you out, so they had to streamline that process and that seems to, although a lot of people don't like it, it is better than what it was. And most building officials and building departments, they, they make the same type of statements, you know, why should it take six months to have somebody pick up their garbage? Why should it take, uh, a fine process, ninety days, when someone's not picking up a mattress? Because not only are the eyesores, but there's also health, safety and welfare, uh, uh, issues that come into place. These things that are packed outside onto, uh, sidewalks and roads, they get in the way of emergency vehicles, they get in the way of police vehicles. If it's out there during the winter time, uh, you know, kids are standing at a bus stop, they can't stand at the bus stop anymore because there's things on the sidewalks.
Animals and stuff too.
Well, I'm just saying, it, it's, it's a blight and every possible, um, uh, you know, cautionary tale as to what could possibly happen will happen, including animals. So I'm gonna sit down with George, um, see what we can do, take a look at, uh, what other communities have done regarding enabling legislation and if the district court won't take on this additional burden, um, we can perhaps streamline the municipal court, um, part of it and even taking, um, I don't know if it's gonna be plausible, but perhaps even taking just one specific day out of the month for municipal court just to hear these types of matters and not mix them in with, you know, either parking violations, uh, motor vehicle violations or other types of violations, so.
Is that how it works right now, the traffic court meets and they, they see these violations at that point?
I mean, when the municipal court meets, their docket is full of moving violations, parking violations.
Tom, next.
Why would district court be in charge of our own municipality for violations of, say, mattresses or jackpots from apartments?
It's, it's a kind of a strange thing because, believe it or not, some cities and towns even today don't have municipal courts.
Yeah, but we already have that.
I know, I understand that, but they, they have, they'll take a matter, for example, on a zoning violation, they'll take it to district court. Colosters like that. However, since we do have a municipal court, the question now is, will the district court take this on as a direct, not an appeal, but a direct case allowing them to have original jurisdiction? As I told George today, my feeling is that Judge LaFazia will say no. And so if it kicks it back to our municipal court, now municipal court meets what, twice a month?
Yeah.
Twice a month.
Municipal court may have to meet three times a month. But there might be a built in expense, having municipal court meet one additional day. Of course there's...
Cause there's employees that work there.
Right. So the issue is gonna be, what can we do to streamline that process? And the other part of this equation is when the building official and his department is looking at what particular properties to prosecute, streamline that process too. I mean, you're gonna go after the biggest fish you can, but allowing the little fish is where all the problems are. So if you have fifteen properties that have mattresses in front of them once a month, that really aren't gonna get the biggest bang for the buck, but you've got one property that's gonna get the town, say fifteen thousand dollars in fines, he's gonna need some direction as to which, which route to take.
Unfortunately, slum lords attract slum people. That I've seen anyway.
You don't need to use those types of words, George, this is West Warwick, things are bright and cheery here.
I, I know. You know, and, um, and I feel bad for the, for the good people, I shouldn't say the good people...
The residents, I mean, they're, they're neighbors, like...
The residents. They're paying the, the big taxes.
Look, we go on our Prospect Hill, George, time and time again, that same...
It's awful.
When I was a kid, we called it Fort Apache, the Bronx, it's still Fort Apache, the Bronx. This landlord gets away with murder, he has a jackpot once a week. People have, they take care of their properties on Prospect Hill, they gotta drive up that hill, all the people see a jackpot on the bottom of the hill and it is, it's the slums.
It's terrible.
It's the slums. And we need some teeth to stop that. We can't stop the tenants, but we sure as hell can stop the landlord because he owns the property.
Well, I think, I think one of the ideas is, as long as we're not gonna go outside the bounds of what Rhode Island law is going to allow and the constitution, is to whether or not, um, those so-called landowners can be addressed more quickly when there's a problem.
Absolutely.
That, that's, that's the basis.
That's what you're trying to do.
Absolutely.
I mean, we're not trying to break their constitutional rights, we're not trying to violate them. All we're doing is trying to protect the people who are making their properties valuable, who aren't having this mess and, and disgusting. I mean, I run a salvage yard and my salvage yard don't look like their yards and I have a license for junk.
Unfortunately, the only thing that really works with some of these landlords is to close them down. And that's a hard thing to do because now you're displacing people.
You know as well as I do, you go to bed at eleven o'clock at night, nothing's there. You come by the next morning at nine o'clock, it's full of stuff. You go to the landlord, you go to the landlord and say, we know this is yours, the landlord does this, prove it.
Washes his hand of it.
Prove it, prove that that is my stuff or prove it's my tenant.
So I gotta go to my books and all the volumes and I pull up my tricks and whatever I can attack them with is what I use. But I, I need something a little bit more solid, so that's why we're here.
How about, how about cameras on the poles across from their properties, so you can see them being taken out?
Well, this day and age, everybody's got cameras, so it's very simple to prove who put it there.
Your brother's watching.
And what happens is it gets moved in the middle of the night, it's between two property lines. He don't, I don't own it, he don't own it and they stand, oh, it's across the street, you know? But if I may, could I have, um, our, uh, minimum housing? Shayna, Inspector, please speak a few, you know, just explain a few things to you if you don't mind.
Well, my concern is, and this is why I brought it to George's attention, is that the landlords who do own a lot of properties and don't keep up with it, they're repeat offenders and going to court and placing a lien or sending a ticket, it's not enough. So I was asking if they could have harsher penalties and that's why I mentioned sixth district court, where if I go out there three times and then I could send out a letter letting them know that, okay, now your property is a nuisance property, if I'm out here again, you should only get three times in the year. If I have to come out again, then you'll be brought to sixth district court or something where they could have a warrant for their arrest or, um, which they wouldn't want that, or have their license suspended and, because they're just paying these fines, like, okay, and then next week it's again, okay, I'll pay the fine, I'll pay the fine, I'll pay the fine and it keeps being a repetitive action and I'm back at this property over and over and over again.
No, I mean, e- each and every councilman has their home or homes in their ward that they've been dealing with over the years. I know Angelo has his, I know I have a couple of mine, I know I've talked to you, I've talked to you, I know Jay. Yeah, I got a bunch. You know, personally, I, 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 I agree with Councilman Padula that we, this has been going on for years. I mean, even since we put the new trash cans out, the town's looked a little cleaner, stuff isn't blowing all around town, recyclables aren't blowing all over the place, so that's been great. When people throw out their mattresses and it's sitting there for three, four, five weeks, it's aggravating, it really is. You know, personally, I know we used to just go out, get it and then find them. You know, I don't know if that's probably the best thing to do right now is, but, but I know having a privatized...
Why can't, why can't, why can't we do that?
It's very expensive to do it that way.
No, it's not, because I'm gonna tell you why. That was the best se, ordinance, the, the best punishment that they could have gotten.
No, no, Angelo, what I'm saying is...
Because if you send our guys, they lean the house, they lean the house and that property, you get the money.
We don't send our guys anymore. Angelo, but now we don't send our guys, we send the private company in.
Oh, yeah.
We pay thousands, a thousand dollars every single time.
Well, then you don't, we don't need them. We got dump trucks, we got guys, go over here, there's a jackpot, pick it up, throw it in your dump stuff. We're fining them a thousand dollars, end of story, the house is leaned, you got a, 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 a lien on the property. I'll tell you what, when the landlords start finding out, you're whacking them a thousand, two thousand dollars for a cleanup if it's there more than twenty-four hours and not in, and it's in violation of our ordinances. I'll tell you what, that word's gonna get out real quick in town.
Unfortunately though, you can have a house with a lien on a property for fifty years, correct? I mean, it's not until they decide, so you're not, that's the problem, we're not, they're not, they're not feeling anything.
Until they say.
Until, you know, they're dying or they finally sell.
That's a current interest every, all the time too, twelve percent. So at the end of the time, we just hate the house.
I know.
I'm saying, they're not gonna, they're gonna wanna pay it, I'm not gonna wanna fine on my property where you're gonna own the house for, for fines.
Because of mattresses.
And we have had a couple of times where people would say, you can't just come and pick up my stuff by law through the state of Rhode Island, you have to give me a reasonable amount, amount of time.
But it's not this, it's a sidewalk. Wait, who says that?
Um, some of the homeowners, if they...
Have the homeowner present the authority that allows them to say that to you, if they don't have it, too bad.
Yeah, it's in the, um, property, state property maintenance court.
They're saying you can't take the stuff on the curb?
If it's on the curb, it's on the curb, sayonara, see ya.
Yeah, but then when they pick it up, they're getting leaned and that's when they call in and they...
The lien goes against the property, not, not the tenant.
So then, okay, 'cause she's been treating me, I've been handling curbside and Shayna's been handling within the property line. So in my, I've been following suit with her, giving them the notice, giving them the timeframe, sending the letter if it's not... And this is another thing, it's taking so much time, we, we spend so much time in the same homes, the same properties.
Do the letters go to the homeowner?
Yes.
Alright, how many times, not, how many times percentage wise is the homeowner or the property owner out of state?
It's not too much, I...
Yeah, not too many.
Alright, so most of them are in Rhode Island.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so if we were to do something along these lines, suppose we were gonna get enabling legislation to allow us to, not tax their property, but the lien would have more teeth to it as far as, um, the municipal lien certificate. Because what happens is, when they do try to change and transfer the property, the attorneys come in and negotiate, they try to get the money down, we're gonna take you to court, that's unconstitutional, that's illegal, blah, 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 like we had with East Credit Javon. Alright? So after a while, we have, East Credit Javon owed us...
It's over a million.
Over a million dollars, that's never gonna be collected, person walks away, becomes an eyesore, it's been an eyesore now for, what, ten years?
Somebody actually owns it and is paying taxes on it every single year.
Right, for ten years, people have to look at that as a neighbor and say, it looks like, you know, garbage. But you can't, you, all you can do right now is what you're allowed to do under the law. So we have to take a look at that to see whether or not those changes can be made, either at this level or at the state level with the enabling legislation.
So, what I would suggest from here then, so we're not spending all night on this, because we can talk about this all night, is Solicitor Williamson, get with George and Shayna and everybody else, Nicole?
We're gonna try to meet next week.
And and figure it out. And then bring it back before us, and then we can go from there. And if 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 we're looking for stiffer penalties, we can, we can talk about it that night.
Especially if I, if I'm allowed to do less time than you do, being curbside versus property, like that.
Because that's, that's different too. If it's on the sidewalk, sometimes I tell, I say, you know what, they never listen. Just go pick it up and lean it, it's on the sidewalk. But what about the homes where it's in their backyard and there's trash bags? We can't just walk on their backyard and go clean it, and that's when.
No, I I understand that. Well, I'm talking about curbside, you know, we should just go pick it up and that's it. I'm not saying clean their yard. But again, we're talking, you know, sometimes I see an unregistered vehicle sitting in somebody's yard and or on the curb, and it it's not taken care of within seven to ten days, it's, takes thirty, sixty, ninety days. And that car's still sitting in the yard. And, you know, we we went through it with a boat, I mean, it was there for eight months. I mean, it went back and forth, back and forth. It was just ridiculous. And so I understand what Councilman Bedula's saying, it's just, and and I think this, I think most of the councils that have been up here for the last ten years have been trying to get something going, it's just a matter of, you know, how. I mean, at one time, we didn't even have a minimum housing inspector for a little while, and we had to make cuts. I mean, so before Shayna, there was one other person, but other than that, it was a couple of years without one. I mean, and it wasn't working.
What we do, what helps me now is, I can approach the landlords if it's an income house, and I gotta ask permission to go in the yard, and check an unregistered vehicle, trash, et cetera, et cetera. If it's a single family owner, you know, unless they're home, there's nobody there, we don't have a right to walk on, even get in their yard or go into their driveway to tag these unregistered cars. And sometimes it's more than that, it's a junk. Or, you know, and so that's kinda like a little bit handcuffed, you know? So, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And whatever we could do, whatever we could do to help us.
Just get us some ideas, bring it back for the next meeting, and believe me, I'm for it.
Great. Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you, Nicole. Did you wanna speak on that, sir? Just gotta come up to the mic if you do.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Providence Waters requesting permission to open Garnet Street.
Dave Lombardi?
Here we go. Brand new street, just pu- just had it done, what? Nine months? Go ahead, Dave, make me more upset.
I told you about it before.
I know.
Be over that by now.
Well, I forgot about it, how it brings it up, it boils it again.
They got a request from Providence Water, they had a pipe inspection that found out that a six-foot pipe is bad, and they wanna reline the pipe. The only place that they can put the lining is in Garnet Street. They agreed to repave the road curb to curb up to our boundaries that we set.
Is it gonna be repaved back to asphalt binder, I mean, uh, binder asphalt?
Whatever it takes to get it back to where it was, they're gonna do it. So unfortunately, it's a utility, and the ordinance states that you can't deny a utility anyway, so we're gonna have to let them do it.
Is there a timeline when they're gonna repave it?
They've already marked the road and they're just waiting for the okay, so.
This isn't gonna stay another winter like we're doing Wakefield Street and Rivers Street.
No, they wanna get it done by this season.
What is rea- what's, I've never relined a pipe in my life, so what's that?
They're gonna put a polyliner inside the pipe, they put the section down, they press it into the pipe, they hook the next one, and they press it up. But they need a a section that's flat and straight, long enough to get the sections into the pipe. So they're gonna do it both ways, and then they're gonna repave.
They're gonna repave all of Garnet Street, Garnet Street.
They're gonna repave Garnet Street to the limits that I tell them they have to pave to. Garnet goes all the way up to Creston, they gotta gotta pave up there. We're gonna bring it up to a reasonable amount past the dig.
So in other words, if they're digging a ten-foot space, we're only gonna tell them, oh, you're gonna patch thirty feet, that's a patch.
It's gonna be a pretty good section that they're gonna open up.
When they patch that, if they don't, what do you call that with the electric? When you patch, that settles, it separates from the road, the water gets in, lifts our roads. It happens all the time.
They're gonna curb the curb.
But they're gonna make, they're gonna make a scene.
They're gonna infrared the scene. Yeah, I didn't know what you said, when you were saying electric thing, I didn't.
Yeah, infrared, it just wasn't. I mean, I know none of us are for this.
That's exactly what I was just gonna say, they're afraid that pipe lets go, it it's gonna be more than a patch of the road. It'll be a couple of houses wiped out, whatever else down Phoenix Avenue, so.
It's just funny that, you know, all of a sudden, after you pave the road, they find a problem.
They had an inspection in December.
Just happened all night.
And it failed.
Overnight.
What can I tell you?
No, I know, I I mean, it's nothing to do with the.
That's why I put it on the agenda, so you can discuss it, so.
Well, I mean, there's nothing to discuss, they gotta open it up.
Unfortunately. By the way, here, next one's Family Dollar requesting permission over Maple Avenue for drainage if needed.
If needed.
I have a question on this. Well, it's for drainage. Where's this sewer tie in, by the way?
Sewer tie in utilities are off of Main Street.
Cause that's where it is now.
That's where, they're using the existing tie-ins.
What drainage are we talking about for Maple Avenue? I haven't seen all the plans on this.
So they're they're going to have an onsite retention system, underground?
Yeah.
Basically, what that's going to do is that's going to hold all the water on the site for the for the pavement, and then it's gonna meter that water off into the existing town line on Maple Street. Now, there's a catch basin right on the corner at the top. The hope is, and depends on the the construction of that catch basin, is that they can, they can access that from the rear and they won't have to touch Maple Street. Uh, but if they do, it will just be in the vicinity of that catch basin, which is right at the corner of the top entry.
Okay. Now, the other question I do have on this, since I see they're already silting the area and putting up the fence. Where do we stand on the traffic study out of Maple Avenue, left-hand turn?
So the tra- he was supposed to get that to me today, as a matter of fact. He emailed me yesterday, their engineer, but I didn't get it today.
So one thing, just to make it clear, I'm trying to make sure, one of the biggest things in my ward, I don't know if anybody's. In East Maine, you take that left, it's at the same time.
And they, and they each think somebody else ran the red light.
One finger salute and the the horn going, and I I what I'm trying to get resolved is if Dollar Store does go in there, which they are going in there.
They're going to the old, the old Petroselys, correct?
So they could try to resolve that left-hand turn issue and try to time that.
To coordinate the signal.
Coordinate.
So they won't go, so they won't, they won't be at the same time?
We're trying to work that out, and I'm trying to get them to cover that, so we'll see how that goes. I don't mock still working on it.
Yeah.
So when you get that study back, if you can bring that, I don't have a problem with this. You know, hopefully, just gotta make sure it's paved, I don't want any sinkage afterwards.
No, we're gonna make sure, they're gonna go for ninety-eight percent compact.
I have faith in their work, I've seen some of the other stores they've done in Rhode Island. So let's go with it. Next one's economic business, thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Steve.
Economic Business Advisory Panel, sponsored by Councilman Messia.
So I've talked to a handful of businesses the past couple of months, trying to find a way to make West Warwick entice new businesses to come here and help out the businesses that are already here. And I think the best person to talk to is is business owners. Ideally, if if we can approve this tonight, put it on the next agenda and get some business owners here. I have a handful already that are interested. Think ideally, they'd meet about once a month and bring to us different ideas that they have, suggestions to make it friendlier for them to do business here in West Warwick. If anybody else has anything to add to this, but obviously, we've had a lot of, a lot of big businesses leave West Warwick in the last two years. The Villa, we had Rocks, Rocks Produce, West Valley Inn. So I think it's important for us to find ways that, what we can do as a council to help these businesses. Once a month, maybe they come to us with some ideas, some suggestions.
Well, that's, that's the question I have, is, is this gonna be like a panel, is it gonna be a restriction of how many businesses or how many business owners? Is it gonna be limited to certain business owners?
Is it gonna be property owners, business owners that own it, not just renters? And nothing against renters, but they have no vested interest in this town, so if they're gonna put something.
The renters don't have a vested interest in the town?
I I. I don't think so.
You have a lot of renters and you're in Ward one.
I'm just saying, that, they can move their business.
Jay, Angelo, I wanna interrupt both of yous for a second. First of all, I know people who rent from Royal Mills and go over to River Point Park, they made an entire bicycle park for the entire town of West Warwick, and they're a renter. They pay twelve hundred dollars a month where they live, they have vested interests in this town. I don't care if you rent, own, whatever you have, if you're spending money in this town and you're running a business in this town, if I'm running a business in this town.
Then why don't we let them vote?
But if I'm running a business in this.
Wait a minute, I I agree, I agree what you say. But now I want, I want you to answer me this.
A rent, you rent an apartment, you can vote?
Person rents a business, can he vote?
No, if he lives in town, he can.
That's my, well, I'm not saying that. I'm saying there should be certain, certain criteria that they have to meet to set this board up. It can't be, I need, I want, I want my friend Mark to sit on it. Why? Oh, I don't know, he's selling marijuana pipes down the street. I don't want that, I don't want that.
Do you sell marijuana pipes down the street, Mark? Is that true?
All right, listen, listen.
He would if we give him a license.
I'm not saying, Angelo, I'm I'm saying, if I rent, if I rent a building here and I have a d- a good business, I'm still gonna have a vested interest in my business here in the community. I mean, that's, that's.
And at the end of the, this is, this is a way to get suggestions to the council, this is not gonna be a board that's gonna put any, they're not gonna be putting any laws or ordinance in. They're gonna be bringing suggestions to the council.
Would this be set up similar to the Recreation Advisory Committee? Where it would be, each ward has a representation on the board, it's open to the public. So therefore, other business owners could, so you could have thirty, forty people at a meeting.
That would require a charter change, to be honest with you.
What do you mean?
Well, you'd have to put it in the charter.
Why?
If you're making a board with public meetings.
Why, why, we could, we could have.
You could create a board by by resolution, give them a charge, and it could be an ad hoc board of the community. That's just an advisory board. If they don't, if they don't vote on anything, if they're not.
There's not for them to decide.
Board, they don't even need to comply with the open meetings law.
They would have discussion, and what they would do as a result of discussion, if there are any conclusions that a majority of them approve. They would, they would send it to the council, saying, for example, any business that employs thirteen or more people should get this type of reduction because it's happened in similar-sized communities, similar tech communities, above problems, Westley and someplace else. It's worked there, we think it's worth a shot. Someone's gonna say, well, how much we're gonna lose, but how much we're gonna gain. The council would do a cost benefit analysis to determine whether or not it's worth a shot on a preliminary basis. And that's basically it. You're not gonna have something where they're gonna need a clerk, keep minutes. Secretary of State, because no one's gonna wanna get on that.
Okay. What what we need is, you know, the ability.
Yeah, sort of, like to bring people together so that they have the opportunity, you know, cause they're on the other side, so they can say to us, well, this is the process.
This is what it's like from our perspective, these are the hurdles that we have to jump, you know, so that we can see.
One other thing, I don't mean to interrupt, but they can do that themselves right now.
Correct.
They could say, we are the Oddic Businessmen's Association, Businessperson's Association.
Village Association doesn't know.
And they can present their ideas to the council, all right? That way, they're not under any type of legal ignorance or mandate regarding public meetings, keeping records, cause if you get an entity involved, that is gonna be forced to keep minutes, forced to post all that stuff. No, thank you, it's too big of a hassle, so.
So I guess the question is, how how would we set it up?
That's.
Right, yeah.
That's what we'd have to set parameters to in in.
When you think of the Oddic Village Association, is that functioning like a Chamber of Commerce? Is that part of their role?
I I wouldn't.
No.
They 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 meet over different things, they bring, they bring things to their meetings, like I've attended a few of their meetings. So.
A Chamber of Commerce isn't usually run by a town, though, they're, they're a business, it's a business.
I'm just saying in terms of the way.
Well, for instance, they'll invite the town manager to talk about things, they'll, they'll invite the police chief to say, hey, you know, we've seen a rise in crime in this area.
It's a private entity.
It's a private entity, so, but that's, that's how they run it, is.
Well, we're, what this would be is, we're trying to organize something like a a Chamber of Commerce.
It's not really like a Chamber of Commerce, though.
That they could do on their own, like the Oddic Village did, association.
Chamber of Commerce's don't really typically get together and bring ideas to the council, it's, it's a biz- a Chamber of Commerce is typically, it's a business to promote.
And I actually, I was a member in East Greenwich, and you would get together and essentially, you're trying to get business from one another. To some degree, I, that's not what we're looking for here, we're looking for a way of businesses having a direct connection to us so that they can advise us on things that are affecting them.
Quasi-governmental entity.
I don't know if we need to do that.
I'm just saying, if you're trying to do that, you're also gonna try to do it so they're not gonna be under the Open Meetings Act.
That's right.
Which might be difficult to do.
You you might be able to do that just simply as an advisory committee. You know, a resolution.
I mean, we all know what 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 the business is stopping us, lack of funds, people not coming in, people not buying your product, they don't have any money, and taxes too high.
No, we don't need this anymore, we already resolved it.
Well, I'm just saying. As being in business, my family over a hundred four years, I know what the problem is.
Oh, no.
I know what the problem is, exactly.
If you wanna bring a business to the town right now, the Krasten says, we can offer you a better tax break, can't, Krasten gets the business, you know? Because they're more.
And then what are we gaining there? We're not gaining any taxes, we're bringing in a business.
I'm just saying, as a competition angle, that sometimes we're on the wrong side.
I I can tell you, business owners that I've, that I've talked to, they, they also create themselves in this business. I'll use Mattos Bakery as an example, you know, PV Donuts comes out with these special donuts. Well, Mattos now increased its sales drastically because he has that type of donut. Ferrucci's, I mean, he's not struggling over here in Oddic.
Not at all.
There's, there's a lot of businesses aren't struggling, so I'm not sure what what people are saying that businesses, everybody keeps saying businesses are leaving West Warwick.
They are.
Well, that's because maybe.
Certain businesses are.
Certain businesses, and maybe those businesses are dying, you know? Angelo, not too many people wanna buy used car parts anymore.
Oh, yeah, I don't have any problem selling used car parts, cause they're, the dealers are putting it on your car, cause they can't afford to buy new.
You're open from nine to two, if you open nine to five, you might get a few hundred dollars more a week, I don't know.
I do my, I do my customers, and and it's a twenty-four hour service on on the pots, so it doesn't matter, I'm there twenty-four hours. So the only time I'm there is when the the body shops and the dealers, and I I don't have to explain that anyway. But, and I'm also there Saturdays and Sundays selling cars and holidays also. But to make a long story short, everybody I talk to, and I'm in the business world, and their main concern, they can't keep up paying the taxes and lack their business, let's put it this way. I used to say to my father when I was a kid, that, that guy just opened up down the street over there, brand-new building, brand-new car carriers, brand-new cars, his wife drives a brand-new truck. See me in three years, see where that guy is. He's right, you know where they are? Joining West Valley Inn and Villa.
Well, I'll tell you, the other day I was on Aster Street and it it was.
Forty-seven businesses down there, they can't keep up.
Pretty busy.
Forty-seven businesses.
Pretty busy in that area.
You know, you talk about Oddic, that little square right there's got twenty-two buildings and forty-seven businesses. And they're having a hard time paying the taxes, and I'll bring twenty-three of them property owners right here, and not one of them will say they can afford to pay the taxes anymore.
Well, let's get this panel together, and then they can discuss if that's the only issue that they have in the entire town of West Warwick.
It's not the only issue, there's a lot of issues, but you have to be in that environment to understand it. You can't be a cheerleader and not know exactly what's going on until you're in the front lines.
Yeah, I feel like I'm on the front lines right now.
You are in the front lines. Come on up, here's a business owner.
Just come up and state your name.
My name's Derek Reed, I own Reed's Landscaping in town of West Warwick, in backside of Oddic. The first problem I have is for Mr. Messia, you wanna build this committee, beautiful. I have a, something to say to you for what you just said, you reached out to businesses. The only ones you've reached out to are the ones you're promoting. I have not.
Is that true?
Oh, that's true.
I reached out on Facebook.
Did you reach out to me?
Did I reach out to every business in town? Well, here it is.
I had to reach out to you, okay? The other thing is, your page, you only promote one type of business, one company per type of business.
My page, my personal business? Okay, so what does that have to do with this at all?
It just seems weird that you wanna be the guy to put this together.
Yeah.
But you're also the guy that wants to promote, people are gonna pay you.
Well, yeah, I do advertising, that's my business.
If I come on your board of committee here.
It's not my board, it'll be the council's board, I don't run this entire board.
You're putting your name on it.
You're right, I sponsored this.
If I come on to this with you, right? And we come up with ideas and whatnot, where does that go?
To us.
Huh?
To us, and then we can discuss it.
And then what's it do from there?
Depends what those ideas are.
Depends what it is.
The idea is to create a platform, like a a bridge essentially, between the business owners and the council, so that we can, you know, get information directly from you. It's great if you're standing in front of us and you're telling us things, but that that doesn't always happen, you don't always see people in front of us. So, you know, moving forward, we have a lot of good ideas. So, you know, moving forward, we have a lot of good ideas, but we also need another perspective.
Alright, for instance, you wanna build Arctic, right? I don't know if any of yous know my business, I know Angelo does, we're pretty big, okay, for this area. I wanted to buy the old Clylumber, you know why I didn't buy the Clylumber? Because Arctic Revitalization didn't want a landscaping company in Arctic, is that right?
No. Since the, it's, is it the revitalization or is it the actual Arctic?
Yeah, he's talking about the Arctic Design Control District, is what he's talking about, and those types of businesses.
I was gonna move my business down there.
Derek, I, I agree with you one hundred percent, because over here, where it used to be Gendron's Jewelers, they wanted to put an auto detailing shop in.
Yeah, which was there, was for a long time.
But, no, they got denied because with the new Arctic, uh, they, they got denied, but they put them.
But the detailing place moved out, but we can grow weed over there, we can sell some grow weed, right?
And I, I actually questioned the town manager, I said, help me understand how you have a auto detailing business that wanted to go in there, we had to deny them. But yet, we, and I, and I understand this, the Arctic, it's not the Arctic Redevelopment Committee, I wanna just clarify that. These were laws that were put into place well before us were up here, and that it was actually done with when, I wanna say, was it Jean Marie Demasi and group were up here? So we're going back to two thousand two, four, and, uh, two thousand two, two thousand.
This was a while ago.
And that's, and, and I'll use Ferrucci's as an example, they, they, he wanted to put a different style building in, they forced him to go with that style. Because.
I just find it odd, because you guys, you know, you keep talking, oh, we wanna make it better, we wanna make it better, but there's so many roadblocks.
There are some.
That is one of the, that's one of the keys to putting this panel together.
So.
That's the whole idea behind it, like in other words, unless you're telling us that, I mean, obviously, there's two members of the council who've been here for a very long time. But as, you know, three new members up here, these are things that we're learning, and that we have to have a better understanding.
There's a lot to learn.
And theoretically, this.
We need people, and we need people to, to bring those things forward, so that we have a better understanding.
And this panel wouldn't necessarily just be the five, let's say we appointed five businesses, it would, it could, as many businesses would wanna show up to these meetings and get involved. The more, the better, the more ideas we have, the better, the more we can communicate with businesses, the better.
I, I just curious how it's gonna work, 'cause I was kinda interested in it, but I don't know, it's like, I don't know what we're gonna get out of it.
I agree with the panel.
You, you could get out of it what you put into it, like anything else.
But I think, again, I, I think it should be, if we're going to have a board, it should be a representative of each ward, open to the public, we could have meetings with, again, thirty, forty, fifty businesses that can, that can speak. But the board would present to the council.
So you wanna, you want the board to be part of government?
I think, well, I think it should be the same as, as the advisory committee, you know, it's a similar thing. They're not making decisions, they're recommending, yes, we'd like to do this, and I understand what you said.
What I'm trying to get at is, if there's twenty guys, you wanna be in charge of making sure that the Secretary of State gets posted for meetings and min, many meeting minutes? No.
No, I understand.
I'm saying, if you guys work that out, that's fine, you can get what you're looking for, they can get what they're looking for, and then these guys can have a platform to get what they're looking for. But I've been saying that if they're mandated to follow the access to Public Record Acts, Open Meeting Acts.
It feels adversarial, though, like in other words, it's not adversarial, but like, you know, you'd have a board, and business owners have to go before the board. I envision this more like a meeting where they can like, come together with ideas, like an open meeting essentially.
Who's gonna be, sorry, so if you have, I'm just trying to make sure I understand this, if we have, everyone in the audience comes to a meeting, who is gonna be the designated person each week, each month, who brings it forward to us?
The five, the five of them would come together, or, or we would, or we would appoint the head.
But what five?
No.
What difference does that make, or Derek called me up, said, I got a problem with this, this is a problem with my business, and calling one of our council, one of his council people up, or Pete calling one of his council men, uh, men up, and, and ask it, so, just because we're gonna put five people there, I'm gonna pick one, each one of us is gonna pick something. You're only gonna have them five people in that room.
No, but I, I agree with Derek with, you know, we have a lot of roadblocks in place. And especially in this Arctic development area, especially down that end, there used to be a lumberyard, that used to be people coming in and out, buying lumber. So now it's a vacant building doing absolutely nothing, and the man wants to put a landscaping business in with his trucks, and, and eating up the property and eating the building, I, it's a roadblock in its way.
Right.
And, and I agree that, you know, it's, it's something that probably should've been brought to us a long time ago.
You know what, though, once the roadblocks there, I'm gonna just go to the next one.
Well, that's it, you're frustrated and you're stuck with that.
I was, I'm a good sized establishment, I was gonna put it over there, I was gonna clean up the corner. And thank God I didn't buy it, I got advised at the very end, don't buy it, make sure you check with, with the Arctic Revitalization or whatever it is, and we did. And they said, no, we don't want a landscaping business, okay, so landscaping business is down here, but the weiner shops up here, you know, or whatever.
There, there are some things I disagree with, like this Arctic, uh, district zone, that they have rules and regulations on what style.
I got, we pay a lot of taxes to this town, okay, I employ a lot of people, I have twelve trucks, okay? That's property tax to this town every, every month, okay? And then I wanted to buy that piece of property, shot down. You know what I'm saying? This town just.
And you wanna, you wanna understand, know something, Derek, none of us knew that probably up here, maybe, maybe you had the conversation with Angelo, but I'll be honest with you.
I called, I called, I called, matter of fact, I called you, Mark, remember? I tried, Arctic Revit, he had to go through an expense, he probably could've had it done. I said that revitalization is the worst thing that ever happened in these small communities, and Derek was almost moving to Coventry. And then something happened where he got another piece of property, and we're fortunate enough to have the business here, but that would've been another business. Another, whether it's ten thousand a year, a hundred thousand a year, that we would've lost, and you add them up, that we don't know of. That you think you know of, but you don't, when you see the buildings, this guy moves out, this other guy moves in, this guy moves out.
Yeah, how about the property I bought that I can't get out?
Property's that?
I bought a piece of property down here off Noon's, behind the bus company, that's landlocked. Yeah, I just want you to write a tax free thing across the street, how about me?
I want that, too.
I want that, I can't even get out my land, I can't drive a truck on it.
Wait a minute, you bought a piece of property that's landlocked?
Yes, yes. Yeah, come up there.
Who?
You're getting into.
No, I ain't gonna get into it.
That's in the sloppy slopes, I, I don't, I mean, I, I can't, you buy a piece of land that somebody landlocked, I don't know how you even do that, to be honest with you.
First of all, it's your district, Noon's Lane, you familiar with Noon's Lane?
Very familiar with.
Noon's Lane does not exist.
Which is that little piece that goes into the.
The road next to it, that has, these all have town street signs on it, okay, Noon's Lane is a town street sign, Mark?
Correct.
Is it something they put up?
Yeah.
Made by the town.
So what they're referring to is Noon's Lane, which is a right of way, or an easement that was established by property owner. And, um, at a point, and I, I won't get into the details, because it's probably going to end up in court.
Before, before we go any further, hold on, guys, this has got nothing to do with what's on the agenda.
No, it doesn't.
No, they're talking about business.
No, 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 right, but if he begins talking specifically about a piece of property, uh, Noon's Lane, that's not a town street, that may end up in court, I would suggest that you all keep your mouth shut, if West Fork is gonna be a party.
I'd like to hear it. You don't have to comment.
You don't have to say it, if you wanna hear the story, I'll tell you the story.
I wanna hear the story.
I already know, I think I know the story, but I'm just saying that, you know.
The planning board, and this has not, this guy's worked with me very hard, okay, so whatever I say is, has nothing to do with him. He got his hands tied by the town's legal counsel, and not you. We purchased the land, okay, Noon's Lane, we did the P and S, everything was being approved, Mr. Boyer put it all together, did not work for me. Okay, all said and done, because of political reasons, Noon's Way disappears. You have documents in the town hall, okay, land descriptions were altered, and submitted to the town.
By who?
Which? By the seller.
Okay, I wanna make sure.
By the seller.
Okay.
Alright, they are sitting here, there is reference to plans, along with the, the land description, that do not exist in this town hall. So going back to business, we put up, and I'll tell you what, I took eighty thousand dollars out of my pocket, gave it to Mr. Noon's, I can't get on my land.
Oh, I'm kinda.
And the town is fully aware of it, he's done his best to help me. And it's been over a year.
Alright, it's just something.
Not right with this.
Saying that, I'm just saying, something just seems kinda odd, there's a couple of facts that are perhaps missing, but, um, my suggestion is to stay on the, um, agenda item, and then we can talk more about.
Just seems like every corner we turn, we get blocked by something in this town.
And he's done his best to help us. He has, he's done his best to help us.
It would seem that you guys have got specific issues that pertains to specific items that I don't even think would be properly before this board was put together. Because it's more of a.
Part of it should, and part of it's gonna be with the town.
I understood, but I think this whole issue about whether a board's gonna be put together, that's gonna be a governmental board or a business board.
But we're just starting to talk about business. Between him and I, since we've been in business, when we had the floods, the chief came to me to get pumps. I had, okay, alright, I had pumps brought in from upstate New York, beautiful, we sponsored baseball teams. We take care of the policeman's park, we put it together, we maintain it, we give our share. But every time I come into this town hall and ask for something, it's like, it's, it's too political, okay? And Mr. Noon's, which I don't care if he's, okay, he's a little too big for his britches, he's only got a little constituency over here.
Again, I can't comment on that, not in public.
You can't, but I understand that, Tim.
But the point I'm trying to get you on is that this issue, as it relates to what Mark.
But this, but this happens over and over.
I understand, but I mean, it's like apples and oranges, if you think there's a political climate here in this town, that is defeating what you guys wanna do with other businesses, that would be discussed at this meeting and brought forth. So number one, if Angelo's right, that it's taxes, and number two, everybody agrees that it's the political climate, oh, that's gonna change. But I'm saying right now, you guys have gone well into the weeds as far as personal stuff.
Beyond this.
Right.
But going back to what you said, I do a lot, a lot of business throughout the state, people talking about West Fork, they don't wanna come here. You know the biggest reason they give me? It's too political, you can't get papers signed.
John.
I live here, it's embarrassing to say here, okay?
Just so everybody knows, in two thousand and six, John and Derek did my backyard, they did a great job.
Did he pay you?
It wasn't, it wasn't, and it wasn't given to me either. But you talk to anybody, North Providence, too political, Johnston, too political, Krasten, too political, Providence, forget about it, everything's political. Then you go to the smaller west coast towns, Gloucester, too political, everyone says it's too political, no matter what the town is, you know that? Cause you, when you try to get a permit on Block Island, the first thing they ask you is, are you from here?
But when you.
Right?
Be honest with me or anybody else, if you have a legal issue.
That's different.
That's fucking dry.
I don't wanna get into that.
Why do you gotta get on America around?
I don't wanna get into that, I'll talk to you afterwards about that, alright, but I'm just saying, as far as the agenda item for a group of business people.
But this is the only time we've had a chance to talk.
But I, I can tell you honestly, I understand what they're saying, because.
But I'm, I'm.
But I don't even get in a group, they're already talking about roadblocks that are being, and that's one of the reasons why businesses aren't coming in.
You said you don't know what goes on in the lumberyard, want me to tell you what goes on the lumberyard? Because I walked in on it when I was gonna close on it.
I know it's in there.
Well, then why'd you say you don't know? You're the town council president, why'd you say you don't know? They got permits, they got permits?
They're protected by Heather, and yes, they are.
The point is, you guys know there's federal laws, there's state laws, okay, if you wanted to talk about the cost of, of workers' compensation, you're gonna bring it to the town council?
No, it's ridiculous.
But it, the town council's got nothing to do with it, they have no authority over workers' compensation.
When they come file their permit, we don't even see their address.
I'm not shocked.
Because they're protected by.
They're protected, they don't have to.
They're protected by state laws.
And even with, you're talking about, if people got together and saw there was some kind of resolve, okay? Whatever it may be, then people have hope. But if you have meeting after meeting and talk and talk and talk, and there's no resolve, me as a businessman and anybody, I don't have time for this. But if we can do something.
Well, that's, I mean, that's the point of this, and it's, and it's all encompassing, it's not just businesses that I promote, it's any business that wants to be involved. I, I want, I wanna, I wanna have, I wanna have as many businesses be part of this as possible.
I guess what I'm gonna suggest to the council is that you have to make a decision about this group of people, whether or not it's gonna be under government, or it's gonna be private, or if it's gonna be quasi, and then the question's gonna be whether or not they're gonna be under the.
I for one don't want it under our council, I don't wanna be responsible for their open meetings laws.
It should be private.
It's, it's gotta be like, yeah, exactly.
Have members, if there is some resolve, if there's no resolve and people are spinning their wheels like.
You'll have the same five there all the time.
Once a week or every two weeks, there should be by majority vote of this board, we're gonna bring this to the council. Tangible taxes are too high, okay, next issue, uh, infrastructure's wrong in this part of town.
I agree with you.
Third structure, we shouldn't have sewers here, we should have wells, fourth structure, uh, how come he got a tax break, how come we can't get tax breaks? Things like this, so once a month, so instead of somebody saying in Natick it's this, in Crofton it's this, in Arctic it's this.
Should be the whole town.
The town says, okay, boom, but the point is putting that together, and then it's.
But it has to, Tim, it has to be resolved.
John.
If people notice something happens, they'll go for it, if people know it's just bullshit, they don't wanna know part of it.
That's a good group that's gonna be private.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Derek.
Um, Paul Faria from Free and Sun Landscaping. I do see some benefit of having a cross section of local businesses serve as an advisory board, be it what it is, if we're not under the auspices of the, the town councils, so we're not falling under, you know, open records laws. If we can get a cross section of local businesses where we can meet to help promote, trying to, for me, it's also not just the tax issue, but it's the image issue. If we can meet with other businesses here and come up with something that we can kind of give ideas to the town, not just anything that would, you know, pigeonhole one specific business, but all, to help create a better business climate. I would say a committee of maybe, like, a group of five to nine, so there's some kind of quorum. And that would, they meet if, cause business owners, it's tough to come to everything, so at least, I would say, at minimum, once a month. Then we meet with the council and have one representative come and give our findings for what we think should come forward from that.
Thank you.
I think any, any business should be involved.
Well, I, that's, that's the thing, it shouldn't just be one particular or another.
I don't think you should be appointed for you to put your two cents in because you're a business, I mean, if businesses come together and it's just a thing to get businesses together and say they're, they're little beefs.
Well, I don't think that would be the case, and I, and I don't think that would be very productive either, I don't think it should be, this would have, for it to be a productive thing, it would actually have to be a volunteer thing, 'cause.
Of course, yes.
I'm also with, uh, the Rhode Island Nursery and Landscape Association, that's completely volunteer that board. And what, by everyone being volunteer on the board, we put forth our best effort to try and, you know, bring about all the benefits of our association. So I think that, uh, say, it wouldn't just be small business owners, we also have factory owners in this town. You know, people that we can draw from their experiences and see what they can also bring to the table. You know, it's not just something business centric, maybe we can get some more business friendly activities, like shut down Main Street for a day, have not just food trucks, but also a stroll like they do in East Greenwich, where the local restaurants can do samplings. You know, something of that nature, have something where we can come up with ideas to present to the town.
We'll take that under advisement, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Just to, Paul, just to give you a heads up, I know Laurie Swanson is doing a taste of Rhode, uh, West Fork, up at, uh, the Civic Center in September.
September?
August or September.
I just remember growing up as a kid, you know.
Well, it's gonna, hers is gonna be a taste of Kent County, it's gonna be West Fork, Warwick and Coventry.
The way I see it, we're trying to revitalize Main Street, you know, bring people to show them where the actual businesses are.
No, I, I agree, one hundred percent. Thank you.
You calling yourself again?
Okay, that is it on discussion action, town managers report. The interim town managers report, wel, welcome first, Mark, how was your first week and a half?
Uh, very hectic. Not, not much to report, I've only been, you know, obviously in the position for a week, I, I do miss Fred already. I've met with a few department heads, we're going to have a, um, department meeting tomorrow, and I expect to set up meetings with the individual directors, find out what's hot on their agendas, what's not, what they need assistance with, um, what I need to know. Uh, I did also receive, you know, which is, will be a benefit to the town, a zone change application for the land property. We're gonna be bringing that before the, uh, planning board in July, and I expect it to be before the town council, either in July or August. Rezone a portion of the property and build a new commercial building, um, on that property, so that's something that we've got going. And I've received a couple of other, um, inquiries about properties in town, one on Coeset Avenue, which I'm not at liberty to discuss in public at this point, um, and another in Arctic, so we are working to try to get, uh, you know, as, as, as the subject of the evening, I guess, businesses to come into town, and. And, uh, I would tell you that, um, some of the regulations that we have are overburdensome, and, you know, we're looking at that through the comprehensive plan. And probably look at some zoning regulations too, and changes to those zoning regulations.
Thank you, Mark.
Uh, while we're on a town manager's report, I can sneak this in. Where's Williamson?
He's out giving advice.
Does, when we put in for the, for the, um, speed limits on, uh.
Oh, yeah, the enabling information?
Yeah.
They haven't got that back yet?
No, we haven't gotten.
Hasn't gone through yet.
It's, it's up there?
I don't know if they're submitting it or what. We have to double check with our, you'd have to check with, uh. We have to check with our reps and senators.
Yeah, but who put it in?
Tim was supposed to put it in.
Tim was supposed to put it in, so he would.
Well, he submitted it to them. We have to make sure that he did that.
Alright, that's all I, I wanted to, but one other thing, where's Dave Lombardi?
We could ask him. He went home. No, he's back there.
He left. Where is he?
He's hiding behind him.
You're hiding over there. When, uh, when's, uh, my favorite contractor gonna finish River Street? We waiting for December?
They've already been given the okay to go ahead, and it shouldn't have happened anytime, but last week it was all raining again, so it backed up.
That's all I got. Thank you for letting me.
Anybody else have anything for the town manager? Financial update.
Been talking a lot, so I'll make this brief. Just wanna fill the council into a couple of things that are going on. Um, I did have a meeting about a week and a half ago with, um, the partner from Macum related to the audit, because before you know it, June thirtieth is going to be here, and we're gonna be commencing another audit. The town is yet to have an audit that was completed by December thirty first. Our goal this year, as well as Macum's, is to actually have it done by December as required by the Audit General. The Audit General has been very patient with us, as well as some other communities, but we are, already have begun the process of starting to do some of the preliminary work to make sure that we meet the December thirty first deadline and be able to have that be one of the, another first, uh, for the town in quite some years. So uh, we are working on that school, uh, the school department did join me as well with that meeting, and we do have a good plan to actually have that in place. If you recall, when Jim was here, he indicated that he had some staff issues that created the delay this year. Those staff issues have been resolved. The team that actually got it done last year, um, in the eleventh hour, is going to be the team that actually works on this with us this year. So I, uh, that's good news to report, and I look forward to actually being able to, to meet that requirement. Or meet that deadline. Um, we did actually just recently receive some information from First Southwest. We have a potential opportunity to refinance a two thousand and seven and a two thousand and nine general obligation bond to have some savings as a result of the market rates being so low. Um, it's preliminary right now, but, um, I'm hopeful that for the next meeting, we'll have some numbers to potentially give you some savings that we can obtain. Basically, the interest charges, uh, we expect the interest rate to be lower, which it will require to, an ordinance with second passage to be able to actually potentially refinance that. So we'll look to have that done for, uh, for the next meeting. Additionally, we're looking to have, um, an ordinance in place or presented to the council at the next meeting for the energy efficiency measures, round two through the infrastructure bank. There's some town hall improvements as well, some additional improvements at the civic center. And I believe maybe even, uh, DPW, again, trying to get some efficiency measures in place. The infrastructure bank is offering us some low financing or low rates. Uh, they're also considering the second turbine, um, financing for that second turbine, and we're also looking into a, a third option, uh, possibly not through the infrastructure bank. Again, to try to keep that interest rate as low as possible, which will ultimately, um, result in some savings, um, related to the debt service on the wind turbines. Um, we, I did actually, Rose and I, um, in the collector's office, um, have an issue with the printers that we've been using for the, um, tax bills and for the delinquency notices. I've recently had conversations, uh, with a gentleman from Innovex, who's actually on the state MPA, and we're looking into an operating lease for a high-speed printer, which will alleviate the tax bill burdensome as far as the time taken to actually produce, produce the tax bills. It's not an actual purchase, so we're not looking, we won't be presenting it to the council for a purchase through a bid process. However, I wanna make sure the council is aware of it, so if you see this equipment that's being brought into the building, you know that it's not something that we actually purchased. We're looking to do it under an operating lease. As such, um, I, I don't see the need to actually present it to you as a bid award, but I wanted the council to be aware of it. It will help streamline the tax bill process, the delinquency notices, um, as well as any other mass mailings that any of the departments may need to do. So it'll give us an opportunity to be able to match produce, um, you know, some of those documents. Um, but again, if the council, um, feels they wanna receive additional information about that, I'd be happy to, to share it with you, but, um, although I don't see it as a need to go through the bid process, I did wanna make sure that the council was aware of it. And if you felt it needed to be any different than that, I would, uh, I would give you the opportunity to, to do so. Um, third, third thing I had was, um, actually a question more than anything else. The summertime, usually the council will maybe get down to one meeting a month versus two meetings. Um, once you do have that summer schedule in place, it would, would be great for me to know that, because the couple of ordinances that I mentioned that will need first and second passage, and there may be some deadlines that we need to for financing. So as soon as you do actually know.
The only time we'll meet is July.
We, we cut one meeting down in July, the fourth of July week.
Okay.
And, um, the August one, yeah.
Okay, so Ju- so June, you do expect to have two meetings? Okay, that'll be helpful. So we wanna get those ordinances in place so that if an opportunity arises, we can move forward with any of the financing and not have to, you know, request some type of special meeting because we don't have the authority.
Yep.
And, uh, I think that pretty much, uh, sums it up. And I also, no offense to Mark, but I also miss Fred already, and it's only been, what, a week and a half? But, um, you know, Mark's, Mark's been great, and you know, him and I have been having a lot of conversations to try to, um, you know, keep things going in the direction that things were going before.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions for John? Thank you, John. Um, just to go over a couple of quick things before we come to upcoming appointments, going back to the town manager's report. Um, next week, we are meeting with, uh, next Tuesday, six P M. We're meeting with the hiring board, um, which consists of nine individuals, including Mark, John, Karen, and Karen, uh, Siafi, and Karen Tarasavich. Bob Boyer, Kevin Malanzie, mine was John, Michael Pinga, and.
Jim Marsh.
Jim Marsh. So we'll be meeting with them with the executive session. We'll be getting the applications, um, before us. And, uh, we'll give them our expectations of what we're looking for, and then they'll be performing their interviews and moving forward. I think we have nineteen applications, so, um, we'll see how that goes. I think nineteen or twenty, last count.
Nineteen, I think.
Yeah. That's all.
Date following, following that executive session at six o'clock, there will be a six thirty, the second public hearing on the civic center budget, just as a reminder.
We have that quarter of.
Okay.
We're gonna need that time, yeah.
Well, I think Paul, or, um, originally had advertised it for six thirty, so as long as it's not.
Move it up.
Yeah.
Before time.
And while we're, while we're on financial update, uh, Judy Tees and Saint, uh, Brian Saint Germain Foundation, same thing for them from last year. Judy Tees is right here.
That's, um, that's the full page of the council.
Yep, and, uh, Brian Saint Germain, uh, bicycle, motorcycle run, bicycle run, motorcycle run, which is.
Next week.
Is it June ninth?
Yeah. Coming up. Today is.
There's a carnival there.
Oh, boy.
There's a carnival there.
June, when is it?
That leaves the high school, well, that's early morning, that's nine A M. The carnival's open until noon time, so where else is that? I'm just happy and panicked. Well, yeah, but how far is, how far is the carnival gonna extend, though? The carnival's gonna be on the upper half. Yeah. The, the motorcycle, but the bottom half is used for parking. But the motorcycle run leaves at nine A M., if I remember correctly. Um, actually, no, eleven A M., because she asked me to come and speak there. But that would be where the.
Yeah, but you're not gonna get any traffic for the carnival at eleven o'clock.
No, so hopefully, uh, we have no issues there. So, if so, it's, if so, it's, Laurie, take care of it. I know she's watching at home. You can take, you got, it's on you. Yeah, give us something else for Laurie to do tomorrow. She's gonna be panicked. Um, but the Brian Saint Germain run, if, if nobody has ever been up there, it's very impressive. Uh, seen all the motorcycles leave. Uh, I know last year I videoed it and posted it for Lynn. She was very happy with it. Um, and if anybody wants to attend or speak, just let Lynn know. I don't know if I will be in town because of softball, but other than that. That's all I have. So Judy Tees and Brian Saint Germain, one hundred dollars each for both. Uh, Brian Saint Germain, we usually get T-shirts from them. It's, all the sponsors are on the back of the T-shirts. Last year, they were bright yellow, very bright yellow. Thank you. That's all I have.
Upcoming appointments, planning board, one alternate member, five-year term, and one. And one five-year term. Technology committee, ward two to expire twelve thirty-one eighteen, ward three to expire twelve thirty-one eighteen, ward four to expire twelve thirty-one eighteen. The Texel River Authority, one three-year term, zoning board of review, one five-year term, Kent County Water Authority, one ten-year term. Public comment?
Any public comment from the council?
I'm, I'm just curious about the, um, technology committee. Do they, do they even meet?
No.
Like, I, I mean.
You asked, I'm giving you a straight out answer.
What's going on with the technology committee? Like, we, you know, someone just brought it up to me, uh, the other day. I, I guess he's, well, he's a new member, and he's curious, you know? When do they meet?
Other committees?
And what is their purpose?
Do they have to abide by the open meetings laws too, when they're part of the committee? If I, if, I cannot even tell you when the last time they met. This was something, I mean.
Couple of years ago, I think.
I think it was two years ago, exactly. I.
But that was gonna come back into, um.
Effect.
Effect, and, um, I don't know, I don't know what happened. Don't know that either.
Well, to, to piggyback on that, which isn't part of this.
I know where you're going with this.
The recreation advisory board, cause I had a question. We just appointed someone in ward four and someone in ward three, finally in ward three, after, I don't know, years and years and years.
It's probably years since they met, right?
Steve Law.
We've been on it for three years. The tennis courts weren't, the, the tennis courts were the last time we met.
Right.
Jay and I, Jay was on it, and I was on it, and. You were on as, as.
As the liaison.
I don't, I don't vote, I just go as me, my, uh, myself, and Steve Law, and only go on behalf of the school, to me, to myself, and I just listen. You alright back there, chief? You didn't fall asleep, did you?
But I, I think.
We'll start yelling a little more, get you, get you juices.
Well, I know as far as the recreation committee, I, it's either gonna be Freddie Gill or, or Dave. I'm not sure which. I'm sure Dave's gonna pass that down to Fred, but.
As chair?
As a representative from, from the town.
Freddie's, Freddie just finished off the school week that he was going to, and he's making arrangements, taking all names and making the first, you know, meeting.
Perfect. Alright, I won't say anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, because this same person, you know, mentioned parks are wrecked, and I said, well, we talked to Jason Messier, we need Jason Chidi, because I don't think anything's even happened. You're on it?
He's a liaison for the council.
You're the liaison.
I just show up one day, tell me the meeting's going.
Right.
Um, any public comment from the public?
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
I have, I have one thing.
What?
I'll keep it quick, alright, but public comment. Um, there's actually two things, and I'll keep them quick.
In six parts.
But they're important, no, they're important. Um, uh, we have the, just remember the date.
We're gonna talk to that guy.
We have the opening of the fishing pier coming up on Saturday, June tenth.
What a busy weekend.
And it's, and it's gorgeous, if you haven't seen it. Um, the rain date will be Sunday, June eleventh.
No rain.
Um, but it never rains.
In West Warwick.
Um, and the other thing I, I wanna bring up, and this is something that I, I didn't put on the agenda, um, I did email Major Knott, uh, with, along with the traffic commission regarding stop signs on Pulaski Street. I've said it for about six months, and I've had many, many constituents email me, call me, and ask, what are we gonna do about Pulaski Street? Not just the speed, but because of the safety with the daycare there. I spoke with, with, um, Councilman Messier about this, because it is two wards, ward three and four.
I suggested bringing that dumpster problem into the street, but it was voted against.
But so, one of the things that we'd like to do is create the solution, hopefully it'll be, it will be a solution, um, to help with the speed, but just, but safety as well, uh, is to put a stop sign, if you're heading from Coventry into West Warwick, uh, right before Harley Street on the right, and then putting another stop sign heading from West Warwick into Coventry on the opposite side, Abbot Tuck's.
Why don't you put it on the agenda for, for the next month's, uh, next meeting for discussion action?
Well, he already brought it to this traffic commission, so the traffic commission's gonna meet on that.
They already, they already discussed that.
So what was?
Comes to the council.
Mark, what was the decision on that?
There were several suggestions or questions about stop signs. And collectively, unless there is a traffic pattern or an ob- site obstruction, using stop signs, and this is by the federal guidelines, which I mentioned it to the council and, but Charlie that, I'll put that together in a kind of brief package and share with you all, so you, so you have um, what our thinking is based on that. And obviously, I, I said, you know, we're only an advisory panel. You folks can do what you see fit based on, um, how you feel. Um, but stop signs, in our opinion, are not the answer to speed. Yes, will they slow things down, because most people are gonna come to a stop or do the Rhode Island roll through them? But they do create other problems. Um, so just putting up stop signs isn't something that the traffic committee, um, will generally just say, yes, that's a great idea, we wanna support that. We're gonna give you us our, our honest impression. You can take it or leave it. When it's not personal, we don't.
You can put it on, yeah, put it on the agenda, cause I'd like, I'd like to hear your full take on it next week.
We did discuss it, Pulaski Street, and I forget, there was one other one. Um, I'm just waiting feedback on, from the rest of the traffic committee on the minutes that I put together before I email them to you folks. But with that, um, just that this week while I'm the acting chief, and half of next week, I'm kinda doing a little bit of running around. Soon as I can give that back to Colonel Magara, I'll try to get that stuff together, cause I wanna put together a nice package for you that you can kinda see our logic, and as, as people call you or email you, you kinda have some backbone that you can actually cut and paste it and send.
Yeah.
Out to folks. Um, in addition to that, obviously, I, I wanna kinda propose that as funds become available, whether it's by ward or, you know, gradually that we consider getting extra radar signs. Um, we do have the one fully functioning that, um, can.
So you, you don't, you don't, so you don't have the actual radar, so not those things we have in the middle of the road there, like actual radar signs?
Actual movable ones are nice. I mean, we have the, on Wakefield Street, that unfortunately, one of them's been down for a while, that Kent Towns is working on.
So we have two right now?
Yeah, one's on North Pleasant.
We have three.
Three total.
We have three. I mean, right now, because of, they're all solar powered, so with, uh, last week, um, they're probably all flashing that they need to be recharged. Um, so. They're all solar powered.
Not because of lack of sun, could it be?
I think that's.
How effe- how effective are those that deter speeding?
I mean, while they're, they are great. I mean, that's why we kinda try to rotate them around. If, I mean, cause I.
You can also get numbers from it too, right? Data?
We have one that can provide reports, so I can give feedback. I try to use that one in the hotspots, Pulaski Street being one of them, where I can say, you know, people, you know, like to say they're doing fifty or sixty miles an hour on there. And, you know, I can get the reports to say, the average speed is thirty-eight.
Even my street, Robinson Way, didn't you have like your record all time on, was it my, was it my road?
That was my, well, that's where he yielded. I tried stopping him a lot further down plus East Street at sixty-seven miles an hour or whatever it was.
Yeah.
Um, but those, those are great tools. That's part of, it's part of the education portion and awareness portion of the program. Secondy, secondarily, we'll do what we need to do as far as enforcement. Uh, you know, nobody really likes to go out there and write tickets, but unfortunately, some people, that's the only way they'll learn and abide if there's the threat that that's gonna happen, and hitting them in the pocketbook. I mean, no one really enjoys doing that, at least the officers I work with, um, don't enjoy doing it, but they understand it's a necessary part of the job, the enforcement part. So between the awareness, education, and enforcement, that's the police aspect of it. Obviously, our committee works together to talk, you know, about engineering, road design, anything that we can do to try to make things safer and more efficient.
Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alright, add a motion to adjourn. I had a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, savin'. Thank you, have a good night. I don't wanna say it.
Huh? Yeah, but we don't have a daycare on Point Avenue.
No, no, the stop sign, they be freaking block.
Right.
So, I, I would really work on Pulaski all day. I think Pulaski's a better spot than I could perform on the top of Factory Street.